Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The first item on the agenda is public comment. And does anybody sign up for public comment? All right.
Nobody.
Nobody. All right, moving on to the superintendent update. Dr. Baieda.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss, members of the committee and the public that are here this evening. First of all, a couple of general announcements. We've started the, I've started the attend the PTO meetings. I had my first one at the Dawes School the other evening. It was great. Thank you to Mr. C. for hosting me there and his team. Had a great opportunity. I'm getting more on the calendar for December and January. The Wellness Committee is underway. I know that we have folks in the room that are part of that, so it's great to see that the committee's actions are moving forward and providing you some feedback. The surveys for my entry plan for all employees and students in grade six to 12 and parents pre-K to 12 will be going out in early December and be available through the holidays. The 29th of this month, we have our first 300th, Stoughton's 300th anniversary kickoff with the schools, with the committee, so that we'll be involved with that over the next two-plus years. Looking forward to that. And then lastly, we will be posting for our Director of Facilities position based on the retirement of Ms. Husseini tomorrow. And we'll begin that process of a search and try to find the right candidate. And then lastly, at this time, just want to wish all of our families, our staff, and you folks and the community a wonderful Thanksgiving break with lots of family and fun. And go Black Nights tomorrow or Thursday.
I just wanted to clear, be clear that Joyce Husseini is not retiring tomorrow. You're posting the position tomorrow.
Thank you for the clarification. That's my ELL background still.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent? All right. All right, thank you, Dr. Baieda. Moving on to our Student Advisory Committee representative, we have Angie Miller here with us today. Angie, what do you have for us?
So, the student council's working on, we had our Make a Difference Week last week. We did clothes drive, canned food drive, hygiene items, school supplies. I think that was it. So, we did that all last week. We tallied it all up. The grades did really well. We raised a lot of stuff. We did our penny wars, so the money went to the student council as well. So, that was all like Spirit Week activities. And then this week, the student council set up our pep rally. We're having our pep rally tomorrow, and then our powder puff game and football game, so it's all very exciting. Next week, so our fall sports season concluded, and now we're going into winter sports, starting on Monday. Very exciting, so, pretty much all.
You guys have been busy.
Yeah.
It's fantastic. Really excited to hear about the success of the Spirit Week and wishing you all a very successful pep rally and successful powder puff game and, of course, the actual Thanksgiving game.
Thank you.
Last time, the Student Advisory Council wanted a little bit of an update on the Hanson Playground. Dr. Baieda, I know you were going to meet with Ms. Husseini about that. Do you have anything for them?
Yes, yes. So, I've gone through the actual article and the application process that I signed off on. We will be putting together a working committee, and I will make sure that we're reaching out to our student representatives that were involved in that process. Some of them may actually, I believe, be seniors, so I'd like to get their hands in this a little bit since they were such involved. So, I'll report back probably no later than after the holidays because I'd really like to start that project along with a couple of other projects that are timely.
Thank you. Yes, I think with the Director of Operations and me is retiring, we have to make sure that we, that project and the given swing don't, don't fall through the cracks. They're very important to our students, so I hope you can take that back to the Student Council, our Student Advisory Committee, and let them know that we'll be reaching out about that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To the superintendent, through you, can you simply clarify which holiday he's referring to when he talks about wanting to start that process up?
So, Joyce is out the rest of this, this week and is back next week, so I'd probably say by the time we get through getting to the students, it'll be after the Christmas break.
Thank you.
So, I would say the first of the year. Part of it is just because we want to make sure that that's a working committee, and with Joyce retiring in January, I want to make sure that our transition has somebody who will be here throughout that project, if you will. And it might be me, it might be that I have to defer to another administrator during that time, but I want to make sure that we do it right, right off the bat because we have to go off of bids and all that stuff.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Anyone have any other questions or comments for our student representative? Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to you and to the rest of the committee. All right, moving on to new business. We have a couple of things to vote on before we get into really the meat of the meeting. The first item is the STA Unit B Memorandum of Agreement Acceptance. Are you listening, Dr. Baieda?
So, as you know, we went back and forth with our titles under the Unit B, and you have before you the updated titles that will go into the new, if you will, the same organizational chart, just with the flow showing where everybody is. You will not get that until after Unit A is agreed upon because there's impacts there. Effective the 4th of this year, the Director of ELL, Dr. Clearly, will move from 195 days to 12-month position. And the other two main areas are effective July 2024, the work here for the Assistant Director of Special Ed of Out of District and Student Supports will move to 195 days, so we're flipping the two positions, basically. And then lastly, our Assistant Director of Special Education pre-K to five will receive a one-time stipend for this year for her work as Director of Social Emotional Learning since we have not yet filled that position, and she's been doing it now for two-plus years. So, this is just an opportunity to provide some compensation for the extra hours, which is easily about 30 to 35 hours a month that she's putting in of her own time above the on. So, this is just a way to say thank you until we can find the resources to be able to fill the position. And it would require a vote of the committee, the signature by the, signature and date by the chair.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the MLA? Do we have a motion to approve the, all right, so a motion to approve the STA Unit A, Unit B, sorry, Memorandum of Agreement? The motion is made by Lindsay. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Fabian. The motion has been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried for zero. I will sign it before I forget. Data, I should know what today's date is because. All right, and I'm going to put it here with the things to give to Dr. Baieda after the meeting. Next item, acceptance of warrants. We have various warrants. I think they've all been signed by those present. Do we have a motion to accept the warrants?
Motion to accept the warrants.
All right, the motion was made by Fabian and seconded by Chris. It's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried for zero. Warrants have been approved. Next is the acceptance of minutes on from November 7th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to ask for any amendments or corrections for the minutes from November 7th, 2023. I have a few. I would like to add that also present was Mr. Colantonio, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Wellness. At the bottom of page one, Joyce Husseini is retiring. She didn't, different kind of resigning. She resigned because she is retiring. On page two, under the Wellness Committee appointment, I would like to add the sentence, "Chair Catherine Weiss thanks the many parents who volunteered to serve on the Wellness Committee." Just that sentence, just to recognize, I want to put it in the record that we really appreciate the overwhelming response that we had to that. At the top of page three, it's the FY 2025 budget that we were reviewing last time. It's very confusing to talk about the 2025 year. And then I think that's it. All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Still moved.
I'll give it to Chris. Do you want to second it, Fabian?
Second.
All right, so the motion's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried for zero. So, we've gone through the votes. Now to the media part of the meeting. And I am, I'm trying to put somewhere, all right. For policy discussion, IKB homework. Just to give you a little background, the school committee sought to establish a homework policy to ensure that homework is relevant to and supportive of what students are learning and to allow students to balance the demands of schoolwork with their responsibilities outside of school. The policy, IKB homework, has been in effect for about a year and a half now. I would like to ask the committee if they are willing to review how well the policy is working with respect to those goals. To do that, I'd like to propose, after discussing with previous committee members and other people, kind of how to go about this, having the administration survey students, parents and guardians and teachers about the policy successes and challenges, and then form working groups, perhaps for elementary, middle and high school, maybe also special ed and English language learners to go over those results. Speaking with groups like the PTOs, the school councils, CPAC and LPAC, now that we have liaisons to those, Student Advisory Committee would be a helpful group for us to talk to. And then have the policy working group share findings and any recommendations with the committee, looking at a timeline of taking the rest of the school year, doing that at the end of the school year with any changes, should there be any, to go into effect the following school year. So, that's my kind of proposal for this. We could talk about the homework policy all night, I'm sure. I know we all have thoughts about the reasons that it was proposed, the way that it's been written and enforced, but that, that would be my suggestion about how we look at this and kind of take the pulse of how it's working and is it achieving those goals of having students do meaningful work outside of the classroom that's not taking them five, six hours a night to do, to complete. Thoughts?
Madam Chair, I have a question regarding the homework policy goal. Obviously, I was not a school committee member when that policy rolled out, but the goal, to me, doesn't sound like a goal. It sounds like an output. Was there actually a larger overarching goal in mind?
You have the policy in front of you.
Correct.
And I think that, I don't know, I don't know if you would describe it as the goal, but the, two of the areas of concern, I should say, for the school committee was the amount of time that students were spending on homework and how, making sure that the homework had some bearing on what they were doing within the classroom, that it was either, as you saw, the, the reasons for the homework, that it was either introducing something that would be learned in the classroom, that it was reinforcing what was learned, it was practice when what was learned, it was taking what they were learning to the next level. I think we've all had a class where we read something and then it never appeared again. It was never discussed, it was never that. So, making sure that homework had a, had some sort of thought behind it, that it wasn't just busy work to keep students busy. So, those were some of the concerns that the committee was hoping to address at that time. And I know it had been something that had been in discussion for a while before it came out. This was not something that they came, woke up one day and said, "Let's have a homework policy where we limit how much homework is done." It was, is the work of, you know, a lot of discussion and thought, but, you know, I think it'd be worthwhile to revisit it. We, I know Dr. Baieda's, you know, had some discussions with the teachers about the way it's enforced and understood. There's been some misunderstanding from parents. I've heard parents say that they set a timer, and the second the timer goes off, they take books away from their kids, and that's not how this is supposed to work. But there's also parents saying, "My child still has, is spending two hours a night on some subject's homework," and that's also not what it's supposed to attempt, so.
Yeah, so, Ms. Weiss, thank you and the, and the committee for considering this discussion. I think it's really, really important for us to have an educational discussion about the balance of homework and what it is. And so, as I put forth to you folks, I am very much not an anti-homework or pro-homework person. I believe that the system needs to have practical understanding of why we do homework. So, I believe the purpose of the policy as written is very clear. It clearly defines what homework should be about, the review of the work from the prior day, the potential pre-work that can take place, studying for an assessment, you know. What I have some exception to is the idea that one shoe fits all with time. And I can speak from that personally. I also can speak from that from students that I've taught throughout the years, and also the accountability we have to place on our teachers, that doing 60 pages of reading one night is probably not in the best interest of students, especially when they're carrying a full load with two or three APs and so on and so forth. I would also argue that a predominant number of our students that go to college don't even take an AP class. And so, really, we need to muster up our academics. So, this is about balance. I agree with the intent that kids should not, our students should not be tied to hours upon hours of homework at night. And I want to take on that issue. That's more important than 10 minutes, 15 or 20. And, and part of it is that we have children who have learning challenges. 10 minutes to them is very different than 10 minutes to the student who is reading above grade level by three grades and what it means. And I still believe that practice, when it comes to the areas of, of reading, makes perfect as much as possible, as long as it's not just redundant and filling in the worksheet, if you will. So, the purpose is clear, the time needs some further reconsideration, and I think, lastly, the intent of asking, here you are, a number of months, a year later, let's ask the, the student body, let's ask parents, let's ask our staff, the pros and cons. We're going to get pros and cons. That's a good thing. That allows for you folks to say, "Is it working? It's not working. How should it be tweaked?" We don't want to go pendulum back and forth. We want to establish what the purpose of homework is and do it in a way where we can hold folks accountable at the teacher level and also at the student level. Because I think one shoe, one of the things I've noticed or known from the five of you is one shoe fits all mentality is not what we want in Stoughton Public Schools. We want to make sure that we're looking at, at individual kids. And lastly, I'm a huge proponent that as many weekends as we can take off or in many holidays as we could take off, we, we should. Sometimes policy is not the best way to approach that because something's coming up, whatever it may be, in terms of an assessment and the schedule and mid-years and so, and finals and so on and so forth. So, I appreciate the committee very much concerning collecting data and information. I'm happy to lead the charge along with our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Technology and the team and get it out to as many groups, let as many different groups look at it, as you so clearly articulated, and then get back to you, maybe by May, prior to June, a two-step policy reading of, of updates and/or no updates, whatever the decision, wherever it lies.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I feel like it's a really good way to incorporate a lot of feedback and make sure it works for all of our stakeholders in the district, and yeah, hard to argue with that.
All right, do we need to be, well, not just?
No, I'll, I'll make sure that we'll send the surveys through you as a committee for feedback. They will be short, brief and to the point because that's the best way.
Yes.
They wouldn't start until probably well into January or February, if not a little later. And we'll probably pocket it in different ways, and we also want to get it out in multiple languages to our families.
Yeah, that'd be great, and make sure that it's very obvious in a couple of different ways that families see it, email, online, not just one way. That would be helpful. Thank you. I do want to be clear that this does not mean that we are removing the policy. We're not proposing removing it either, and at this time, we're not changing it. It's in effect, remains in effect. We are looking at it, though. And I want to remind everyone that the school committee is the body that proposes, repeals and modifies policy. That's one of our jobs, so let us do our jobs. I know there's been a couple of groups that have said they're changing it or they want to modify it. Nope, let, let us do our job. We're inviting people to give us feedback on that. And so, I actually encourage people to read the homework policy themselves. I know there's been a lot of confusion. Again, a lot of parents aren't quite sure what the homework policy involves. It's available online. If you go to the Stoughton Public Schools website, go to the school committee page, look for the policy manual, search for homework in the bar, and it will pull up this policy. So, that's what I'm going to say about that, so.
I have a, I have a question about the.
Yes, sure.
So, can you just reiterate how you're incorporating students' feedback on it?
Yes, great. Yes, so we will have students, one of the sets of surveys will go to the students, so we want to make sure that we have that. The working groups, I would like to see some students on the working groups as well, especially at the middle school and high school level. I think it's important to have them on there as we review the results. Certainly, we would like to reach, reach out to the Student Advisory Committee and have that. Do you have any other suggestions on how we could get student involvement?
I, I think the survey is a good idea. I think it might be kind of important to note that maybe we should be mindful of, like, the groups we're surveying, so, like, maybe, like, get it, like, an array of classes that students are taking and kind of note what they're taking because it totally varies. That's my suggestion.
That's a good point. That is, it is going to be very different from, for an elementary school student than a high school student. And even a high school student who's taking a lot of AP classes versus a student who might not be, that's helpful to know as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Might I recommend that maybe the Student Advisory Council meetings help co-design the survey for the high school students to ensure there's a voice in the questions and not just the responses?
Yeah, that would be.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
I know we're trying to do like an all-encompassing approach and being inclusive, which I agree with and everything. I'm just wondering, you can't please everybody.
Right.
So, in light of that, how are we going to, I guess, enforce it and what are the ramifications for non-compliance?
Well, there's a couple of different ways, depending on what your final decision is and which route you want to take. We could put that into the policy. It's more than likely a procedural because it requires direct information from, let's say, a department, an individual teacher, a certain grade level. We would have to collect that data and information. The current policy suggests that already. The issue with the policy is it's, it's, it's written in terms of the time as a guidance.
Yeah.
And so, that can, you know, what I think is a guidance and what you think is a guidance could be two different things, and I think that's part of the issue. And people are playing it very black and white for a number of different reasons, and then also gray for other reasons that I'm not going to get into, but, and so the idea is by collecting all this information, we get a, we get a feeling and to the, Angie's comment earlier, I think it's really important that when we ask students, we, we demographically could also not only survey, but we could also focus group. In other words, grab a bunch of students, put them in a room, maybe with a third party that's unknown to them, somebody that they don't think is looking at them and grading them, if you will, so it wouldn't be a teacher, it wouldn't necessarily be me, but maybe a third party that could ask them questions and say, "So, what do you think about homework?" Well, in this class, in these classes, it's like this, and that class, it's like that, and just collect that information for what it is. And then from there, you know, there are going to be a lot of different reasons for why people believe in homework and don't believe in homework. There is a national movement against homework, period, right? It's happening.
Yeah.
And then there's another movement that says that's not a good idea. And so, the idea is what is, what's Stoughton's best idea in terms of policy and practice? If that answers your question.
We're going to have anonymous feedback too, right?
It's all anonymous.
Okay.
Students will be asked what grade they're in. They may, we may ask questions for students like, or parents, does your child take AP or honors classes, only college prep, which could be check all that apply. You know, it all depends on the student's background, but we want some of that back, some of that background information as well. That's why I think it's important also with some of our languages to target as much as we can, parents with language surveys because, you know, they're, they're, they may only read in Haitian Creole or Portuguese Brazilian or whatever the case.
Can I also add? This is a suggestion. I think if the goal is to limit the amount of homework, I feel like that's coming from a place of the assumption that the student participates in extracurriculars, they have a busy life. Maybe there could also be a more push to, like, get the students involved in extracurriculars and sports and activities, maybe publicize it a little more if the goal is to really, like, allow the student time to focus on stuff for, that they enjoy or to get involved.
That's a really good point. I know that we waived activity fees. That was one of our hopes too, is to get some people who, who are not otherwise involved, involved. We do recognize also that some students work or either paid employment or sometimes unpaid employment, watching their younger sibling or, you know, taking care of neighbors until a parent comes home, so, but that is a good point, that, yes, we should make sure that we'll prioritize extracurriculars and activities and, and make sure there's, there's opportunities for students to participate and extend that learning.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that, that is key here is, is defining what homework is from an educational perspective and why we do it. With a varied student body, a variety of learners and, and students that are involved, like, for example, winter sports registrations up 50 students, fall sports was up 100 students. So, we know, we know that fees that the prior committee voted out absolutely works. But there's all, there's also, as we all know, plenty of athletics in situations that are not related to Stoughton Public Schools that are taking up a significant amount of time of students' lives, maybe too much from my perspective as a parent and as an educational leader, that is not our, is not part of what we do, but part of what other third parties do. And so, we don't have control over those practices and the, the amount of time that a student participates, and I think that's important. The last part is, the goal of homework has been to reinforce, to pre-read, to support in terms of, of, of teaching and learning. And I reiterate what I said earlier, that one shoe shouldn't fit all as part of our system of learners. But at the same time, the balance of that in today's world is a clear thing. We know that in today's world, it's different than it was when I was in high school and some of you were in high school. It's just different. The expectations are different, the demands are different, and I think that's what we want to balance, right? And I think this is a perfect time to reach out and say, "What do we think?" And then the committee has its sole discretion to decide what it wants to do. Whatever you decide to do, no one can say that you did not hear one way or the other. You heard it, you gathered the information, you made your best decision according to what you think is in the best interest of policy.
I think that answers a little bit of Fabian's question about, we got, somebody is always going to disagree with us, but this way, at least we can say that we've had a lot of input from the stakeholders, various stakeholders, and have made our best decision based on that, so. Any other comments, questions? All right, moving on, it's you, the budget, from one big topic to another. I'll turn this over to Dr. Baieda and Ms. Perkins.
Yeah, I'll take the first part and then Ms. Perkins will take the second part.
First, first we'll go over articles. I guess I split them. Articles are new, but the budget is going to come into here anyway, so.
So, I'll start with the articles and the memo that I noted to you. We are looking at four current articles, and you're going to receive a fifth one. And I'll talk about the fifth one that's not here in, in a minute. But the idea that, that I am proposing to the school committee and then from the school committee to both the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the Town Manager, is for us to really take a look at a capital plan that is encompassing of the town-wide departments and not necessarily individual articles. This may not be liked by some, and I've been doing some prior reading and looking at prior town meetings in the years that I haven't been a town meeting member and/or participating in town meeting. And clearly, there is limited funds and there's a lot to do. We can't, we can't go down a road that the only way to resolve our building problems, eight buildings that we currently have, is via a process of MSBA. It just is not going to work and fulfill moving forward. It's a balance of those two things that we have to do. So, you have before you the, the issue of Article One, approximately estimated cost of $90,000 for vestibule updates at both the OMS, the Jones and the Wilkins. Article Two is a very simple safety lining and marking of parking lots. That is to be determined. We're getting prices right now, and that would be pre-K to eight. We just recently did the high school, but all of our schools are, are in need of it. That's a safety issue from the perspective of clearly noting where people are parking, what's a one-way, what's not, what's a sidewalk, what's a crosswalk. We have all of these issues at all of our schools. Number three is around completing a security audit. We estimate that costs $20,000.
We estimate that cost of $20,000 without getting into any detail, which I'm happy to do in executive session if we would like to do that at some point. A security audit is looking at every single thing that takes place in our buildings in terms of security by a third party that will give us the feedback, which will then be utilized in executive session to provide information to you and then work on an actual plan of implementation. And then number four on there is transportation. This is our biggest headache right now, as you know. We are paying significant costs for third parties. We have situations of $200 a day one way, $400 a day, $2,000 a week. We have students $55 a day coming from the same place, going to the same place, but it's per student, not per ride. The industry has taken complete control of how we have to use it. This week, we were talking about McKinney-Vento and we have a split cost with another school community that is just to us, is $10,000 per student, per month. So think about what that means. So the, so we have some serious issues. So what we're proposing is a long-term resolution. This is not a short term because if we were to buy these multifunctional student activity buses of 14 passengers at approximately $380,000 for four of them, coming in at about $95,000. By the way, the last ones that I bought in my last district five years ago were closer to $70,000. Just tells you about what's going on in the industry. The idea is these buses, these mini buses would not be on site for as long as a year. So this is really a long-term solution. We would then be utilizing our own personnel or just hiring part-time staff. We don't want to hire, we don't want to add any cost to healthcare and all of that stuff. This would be our own people driving them, coming up with, for example, if the golf team had six kids participating, the coach could drive it. There's a lot of minutia there that we'd have to talk about, but the idea is to bring the cost down when we have these simple activities of two students going up to the State House or, you know, we've got the wrestling championship and there's two statewide and instead of going in a big yellow bus or sometimes other situations, we would have our own activity bus. So there's a significant cost to that startup cost, but again, we wouldn't see them for a year. So this is trying to hit upon that. And then the one that you do not have is we are asking for a supplemental FY24 article. So that'd be the current budget and we're doing it for three reasons. We are concerned about the topic I just mentioned earlier, McKinney-Vento, transportation. Of course, we're concerned about any further out-of-district special education. And then lastly, we are very much up in the air with the migrant situation and what the money really means. As you know, the State House right now has held up money. There was information, I sent out to Mr. Ford and Mr. C earlier today around applying for X number of dollars by December 1st for the students that have been registered with us since October 3rd, if I remember correctly. Of course, we'll do all of that. But the question is, does it fulfill the original understanding that we had as a community that was taking in students, which we are doing a great job with, thanks to our staff and our administrators? But if it's $55 per student per day to drive to school times X number of students, that $104 per student is getting eaten up pretty quickly. And that doesn't mean any other types of services around EL specifically and even special education. So we're a little concerned about that. I do not want to end up with a situation where I didn't say this could happen. I'd rather have an open article, fill in the number if we need to, or pull it and say, nope, we got the money from the state, we don't have to, we don't have to do this. So that's the reason why you'll see a supplemental article on this as well.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments about the articles here? We're not voting on these tonight. This is reviewing and next, next meeting would be when we vote on them. But I give the committee an opportunity to ask guests, Chris.
So I just want to make an assumption explicit and check it. I'm assuming that Article Three is, is there in addition to the other articles because Articles One, Two and Four are considered a critical immediate need and the other is to ensure a full review going forward. Am I correct in that assumption?
That's correct. So the other articles are actually currently in some way embedded in our capital plans of the reviews of the building. They're within our feasibility study in some way, shape or form. It's the, myself and both Heidi have come from school districts that have completed these types of audits and we don't have one. We think, being new to the district and also really looking this, by the way, these audits always encompass public safety. Right? This is a working knowledge of professionals. I feel very comfortable saying to the public that our school buildings are safe, that we are doing everything that we can on a regular basis to stay safe, but that doesn't mean that a third-party eye on it wouldn't be able to give us some advice and support.
Absolutely. No, I agree, and I think that sends a very strong message to the town that once again we're doing due diligence to ensure the safety of all staff and students in our school buildings. Considering national news items, I think that that's really critical.
I have a question. Sorry. Do you mind helping me understand the connection between the five-year capital improvement plan and like tying that into the municipal departments and then like the articles?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to put the pieces together.
Yeah, so that's a great question and I have to do a little bit of the, of the work on this, but it's my understanding that our articles are really not under a capital plan. They're individual articles that go forward and either there's money to do it or money is borrowed. What I'm suggesting is that we have a true capital plan of our priorities in our physical plants. This includes furniture for schools and upgrading our furnitures. This includes tiles on floors. It includes painting. It includes something like a security audit. It includes air quality testing, if that's what we need to do in a school. It includes so much of the building envelope so that we're really taking a look at a strong and comprehensive attack planning, if you will, on our priorities within the building. Now, there are many different ways of doing this from my limited experience, or my experience. Stoughton seems, from what I've been seeing at town meeting articles, to be very much capital articles from the town, articles from the school. I'm recommending that everybody get together and let's have a talk about what the capital needs of our facilities are in the community. We're currently going out for an elementary building. I believe there's going to be another municipal addition renovation coming. We know that down the road, we have another potential building project, but we have all these other things in between there that we could continue to upgrade so we don't need a building that's going to cost 70, $100 million over the next X number of years. So we're targeting those areas that cost money, there's no doubt. And some of our buildings, the idea of we're going to get it back is probably limited to none, but it costs money and how the town has decided, which I will have to give up to the select board, Tom, Mr. Coulter and the FinCom, is not my final decision, but I believe the committee should take an aggressive approach in saying that we want to be part of that discussion. I believe the town hall does as well. What that means in terms of the town meeting process, I'll have to do a little bit more digging on that. My experience is there's a capital committee that consists of school committee members, consists of, or their designee, select board and designee, the town manager, FinCom rep, some community folks, and you know that you got a million dollars and you decide how the best way to expend the million dollars that fiscal year is. So if there's a priority on town hall because they need a new HVAC system, that's the priority. So that's my intent. That explains it.
Okay. Thank you. No, that's really helpful.
All right, any questions? All right. Are we ready to turn to budget? I'm sure we'll come back to this. We're not done with this discussion yet. Turn to budgets.
Madam Chair, before you start, I just wanted to recognize my colleagues that are in the room, our principals. We have one principal who's under the weather, but thanks to all of them. Our coordinator, ELL, Dawn Fernandez is here as well, as Dr. Quealy is out of the country, if I remember correctly. So welcome to all of them and for taking the time. They're here tonight to take any questions you may have, including that they'll have to respond later. And the idea is they would do some homework and get you the answer and send you a quick email, CC me on it, so that we're all on the same page as to that question. And if you don't have any and you pick them up later, send them to me and I'm happy to get them from them as well.
Questions specific to the articles?
The budget. The article, the article, the article questions came as we discussed earlier from other items, although I will tell you, in at least one case, one of the articles was very clearly made to me that that was a priority for them.
Set to go. This evening, I left out for you basically the same iteration of the budget that was sent via email the other day and that's available, you know, for the public and that'll be sent out to the leadership team tomorrow. It's essentially the same numbers. It's mostly some formatting updates to try and make the font a little bit larger and stuff like that, but you know, as you can see in from, in Dr. Baeda's memo to the school committee, there are some positions, so other than the fact that everything else is pretty much the same as the last time, there were some positions that people throughout the district have requested for various reasons, mandates, et cetera, identified critical needs. And Dr. Baeda reviewed those and sent along to you the positions that he is supporting that we add into the budget or at this iteration of the budget. And so those positions have now been incorporated because obviously we want to be showing the entire budget. And so we'll see for the people at home, the delta between our current FY24 budget and the currently proposed FY25 budget is approximately $9.5 million more for '25 than it is for this year. That's with everything all in. And as Dr. Baeda said, we, oh, sorry. I've got some tables. Capital plan. Sorry. You know, so as we know, we have, you know, additional process to go before we have the public hearing. And we've also mentioned, Dr. Baeda has mentioned in prior discussions that we do not see really what the state's intent is for local aid, the Chapter 70, as well as SOA and any other pots of money that they may be considering in their supplemental budget and in the '25 budget. So both of those things are at play. So right now, what we have before you is everything that was on last time as well as those additional positions incorporated. I did mention last time, but just for anybody that was not here for that, that on the last iteration, we did have the five interventionists that had been ESAR-funded. ESAR funding, as you know, expires at the end of this fiscal year. So those five interventionists would be new, but they were already incorporated in the last iteration when we met. And there really hasn't been any other significant changes since that time. So I don't know.
Yeah, I can piggyback on a couple of things. So one of the things I tried to do and is not easy is when you first walk in and you see a budget and you try to not make it your own, but at the same time, get everybody comfortable with the goal. There are definitely some areas of targeted areas that I would say that we have tried to put into this budget as it currently is. And I want to speak to that if I may. We're very early in the FY25 budget process for the Commonwealth. We still don't know what any of this information looks like from the state. So the first thing that's going to happen was the number that Heidi just mentioned is going to balloon all over social media and so on and so forth. This is a working document that has a lot of unknowns, but also has some significant issues. And you'll see them highlighted in blue, i.e. ESAR funding takeover that we believe is a requirement. We have money in this budget in terms of settling the contract that we're still working on with units. We have special education costs that we have concerns with in terms of student support. So you'll see in the memo, the special education at nine FTEs and then the English-language learners at four FTEs, of which these are all connected directly to student needs, except for the administrative assistant position at the ELL office, which is to support the two administrators that are part of that program. But we are at 600 and, Dawn, not to put you on the spot, 640?
About 640, yeah.
640 EL students currently and FLEPS students. In two and a half fiscal years, you've doubled that number in Stoughton. I want to say that again. We've doubled that number of that population by two times since that. I just met with Dr. Quealy this past week about a concern that we have at the secondary level with being able to service students the remainder of this year. So we're already trying to take care of it for next year within the budget. The, the RISE program moves to the given school right now. With it goes three paraprofessionals and a teacher and a number of students having a lot of deep discussions at the elementary level about where we house our special education programs. I don't see a move for this coming September, but we're going to start seeing some, and by move, I don't mean physical move, I mean changes in the future. Ms. Feeney, who's here tonight, God knows, this team chair, special ed teacher at the Jones School, I don't think, I think she's probably had an interview every other day to try to fill it. So we're trying to get this out as early as we can for next fiscal year. The BCBA, again, directly related to student services and needs. Then you move to general education. The general education budget really has one full-time social studies teacher at the high school to support the schedule and class size reduction across the board. That wasn't an easy decision for Ms. Miller because she's got two other priorities up there as well. It's just this one has a whole impact in the school. Another position may have an impact in certain populations. So we're making these educational best guesses. And then the five interventionists we spoke about, which are in ESAR, and we're moving into the budget, along with the coaches, which are already part of the budget. And then lastly, the other two sections are the student support services position. There are five, and these are all related to data and information that we're seeing. One is changing the model at the middle school from one principal and two assistant principals to a principal, assistant principal and two deans. The tackle behind this is to really see if we can, quote, restructure the priorities of our student body down there at an earlier age than a reaction that we have at the secondary age. So we're going to see some, not, not just disciplinary attack plan here, but literally fostering a sense of community. And that's why we're calling them dean of students, not dean of discipline. We want this position to be encompassing of supporting students. Not only should this person be somebody who a student needs to deal with because they are late to school or were a discipline issue, but this is also a person who can provide them direct services. We see it at the high school on a regular basis with the two full-time people that we have. I just, I just met with one of the two of them. I'm actually meeting with the other one next week when we come back to get their feel about how things are going. And Julie, if you'd like to speak to that, feel free to, not to put you on the spot. And then the four elementary principals, assistant principals, again, this is about, I've spent a lot of time trying to take a look at what our elementary principals are doing and not doing. If we want our elementary principals to be instructional leaders, really looking at reading and writing and arithmetic in our classrooms, they need support. They need somebody who can handle the front office, the buses and all that as a support team. I was in a meeting where I saw three people get up to go deal with a student. These are, these were three educators, none of them an administrator because the administrator was handling another issue. We need our reaction to student discipline issues and support services at the elementary level to be an adult who can get to them and not adults who have to leave their regular job to go get that done as well. So that's a direct response to that. And I do split the position between the South and the Hanson, and I apologize to those two principals, but I think they know why. It came down to limitations and size. And then lastly, on this is the moving the halftime grounds to full-time by either having a second half-timer or having this person become full-time. If they're good, I don't want to get rid of them, so if we have to hire a second, a half-timer. And that is that we really need to take long-term care about the outside of our facilities. Right? We need to be getting our leaves blown. We need our, in order to make sure that we're looking at everything that you could think of, so that our guys that are working inside and outside the buildings have that support person as well. And there's other ways that we can do this if needed. So there are six reasons to take a look at this and I've noted them all, but they all start around one thing. We have a dynamic shift that's taking place around student needs and support. And the way to do that is with professionals that can be able to do it. That said, when we have to make critical decisions about this budget, I'll come back and make recommendations on what those should be. Many of the mandates, if not all of the mandates, are going to stay, which means if I have to cut into the budget, I have to cut somewhere else to do that. That's how budgets work. So when we get there, if we get there, those will be the difficult decisions that we have to, we have to make. The request from the principals, and I'll say it while they're here so they know that I'm taking it right on, is I'm taking it right on, is it was pages long, all absolutely needed, but we had to make critical decisions on what, you know, what we could come forth with that says this is what we need, and then what do we get? One of the biggest problems that we have in public education right now, and I'll end here, is the issue that a few years ago, just a few years ago, we would see some teachers leave, and we potentially would hire a good teacher but at a lesser salary. So what would happen is myself, Mr. Ford, and others at the end of the summer could say, "Oh, you know that position that we really need? We just saved that because we had somebody leave and somebody came in at lesser." Those days are gone. It's almost a dollar-for-dollar that's happening right now. We're not seeing the kids coming out of college who are interested in education, and if they are, they're only lasting three to five years, by the way. And that's not a Stoughton issue, that's a national issue. And so that's a really important part of the dynamic and the discussion is really working with Matt, Matt C. on two things. A, how do we retain our teachers? Now, I understand contracts and money and all of that, but there's also the potential for a good working environment that's supportive, that is making sure that we're taking care of our people, that are asking them what they need, that we're securing them supports when they need it. And I'm hearing from our K-5 staff in particular right now that they need more support than we currently have, especially in response to some of the behavioral issues that we're seeing in the very young grades, which is not a Stoughton, Massachusetts issue. I want to be very clear to the public, this is a statewide, national issue. I was just at a meeting on Friday. The first question, the gentleman who's a school system superintendent in the area said to me is, "What are you doing with behaviors in K-1?" Because we're not used to seeing those types of discussions in that earlier grade. We've also seen, I was talking to Ms. Monahan the other day about a situation where we're supporting, they're trying to support them, thinking outside the box, or I don't even know if it's outside the box. But we're also seeing kids, you know, recalibrate, if you will, and start to act and be kind and gentle and so on and so forth. So I don't want to paint a negative picture. It's just the issues are real. The responses today are, they're physical, they're scratching. It's how they know how to communicate. Remember, we've got to remember, it's not just a negative behavior. It's their way of communicating if they don't like something, or if they don't want to do something, and so on and so forth. So we're seeing more and more of that. So the key is, the key to success would be what Jonathan talked about earlier today, universal pre-K. That's the way to resolve this issue long-term, and that's a project, as you know, that I have, that I've been working with the Commonwealth for years on, in terms of being a superintendent that talks about it all the time. And hopefully, down the road, the Commonwealth decides to do its fair share and do that, because that's one of the best ways for us to address some of our student issues. We can't have parents paying for getting their kids to school because it's a tuition-based preschool program. It's not just, it's the luck of the draw, right? It's the luck of those who can afford it. So I'll leave you with that. Just please know that the budget is a working budget. These numbers will change, hopefully, as we get more and more information. Thank you, and I apologize for the long-winded response.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I do. How do I phrase this? I appreciate, basically, you know, essentially, all the hard work and everything that's included in the budget that you guys have done, and understanding why all the increases have occurred and the needs that we have. I'm just wondering, for the audience, and if we could just share, were there any opportunities for savings at all, or cost-cutting, or adjustments, just to have some fairness with regards to, we have a lot of increases. Was there any kind of savings anywhere?
I can't enumerate which ones specifically, but there definitely were not a lot of them. You know, again, everybody's tired of hearing about inflation, inflation, but the reality is, we did give guidance for a 2% increase in the expense budgets, knowing that that probably doesn't, you know, that doesn't even really cover what's been happening with inflation. So just not go, I would say, cost aversion to not be going up more than 2% was a savings in itself because of the rising cost of supplies. So limiting that to 2% was cost aversion, essentially. There were also just, you know, a couple of spots here and there where people did enumerate, you know, areas where something had changed in their programming, or whatever it might be, and they did have a decrease. And just sort of as the highlight reel two, I mean, I know you can see that, again, for people who, you know, might not pull down a copy or get a copy, just really, the technology budget. And again, we have a set aside for the contractual increases for Unit A, the parent negotiations, and Unit A teachers and the parent negotiations, as well as on the, all the people who are not in a union. So none of their raises are reflected in the respective programs and budgets. You know, that's all in a set-aside number, and that money will move into those when everything is settled. But even right now, without that, the tech budget up $377,000. Well, we all know that not only the cost of licenses going up, our enrollment, just, you know, by itself, is increasing. So every time we renew any software program, the license, you know, it's sort of scaffolded up, like if you have X amount of licenses, 500 licenses, it's this, and then you might have to go to 1,000 licenses, whether you use them or not. So that's just increases in either the program that we're purchasing, maybe in a supplemental part of it, or scaffolding up if we purchase something that, and I can't speak to it because I wasn't here, like say, if we had something that was K-2, and now we're ramping that up to the next grade or two, things like that happen, as well as just costs increase. So that's, you know, just the reality we live in. The EL budget is almost $600,000. Again, tying it to what Dr. Baieda mentioned about the pressure points for some of the mandated things, and also just what's happening within the demographics and subpopulations within our overall school population. The transportation, $700,000, again, going back to what was mentioned. The sped budget without added district transportation is $1.3 million, and the added district is $1.03 million for the placements. And again, we mentioned last time that the state has announced 4.7% increase on the added district tuition rates at the private schools, and it used to be roughly around 2.8 before this current year, which was 14% this year over last year. And the state sets those rates, and, you know, there's nothing we can really say or do about that. So, and then the set aside for the contractual increases, which you have every year, probably running about an average amount, and that's just in its own line right now because we haven't settled. So when you put all that together, that is over $5 million in just those pressure point areas of this overall, and then you have the 2%, and some staff, I would say, in the tech budget too, there's some replacement cycle things that are coming up next year for some of the staff devices and things that we have from time to time. So, you know, I hope that answers that, but we did ask people to look for savings, and if they could identify anything, but with increasing enrollment, increasing numbers in the subpopulations, the mandates, inflation, and the contract negotiations, you know, they really, I really can sit here and say that I really don't feel that there was a lot of wiggle room for any of the budget managers and makers to really do much, anything different than what they submitted.
Two questions, just piggybacking off of the last question. I'm wondering, under the warrants, and I think you've answered this, but once again, I just want to make that assumption explicit, are there, is there any possibility for efficiencies of scale if we are able to work together or work on capital improvement, for example, with the town versus encumbering those costs directly within the school department?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that would be the goal of having the school committee, the select board, the town manager, myself, and if part of the process FinCom comes together, like when, like the idea of if we need to go out for something, doing it together, whatever that may be. So let's say that was painting lines at every public building in the state in the town that needs it. We'd probably get a better price going out together than just us going out for
One school.
Seven out of eight schools or one school, right? So that would be a goal. The other thing, too, is the, I'm not sure what mechanism besides borrowing we're going to be using for capital improvement. Is it, is it free cash? Because we don't want to have operational budgets using free cash. That's been a very, very honest and clear communication from the town manager over and over again. So if that comes to fruition, then, you know, free cash potentially becomes available. If not, are we continuing to borrow, which has its own back and forth? Or does it become part of your operating budget? And that's a, that's a, that's a big issue on the school side. I'm sure it would be on any. I mean, if I need to put $25,000 into the budget for next year's XYZ capital, that's one thing, but that has to be a constant recurring cost. It's not, it's not just a one-timer, if you will.
Right, right. Thank you for that.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to piggyback on that, if it's okay, too. And the five-year, you know, CIP capital improvement plan, which is pretty standard in most towns and cities, some have a 10-year, but majority is five years. Thinking about the town's debt schedule, right? So, and I'm not sure what your bylaws say, or, you know, the practice even says, but a town could have, for instance, that up to $75,000 or $100,000, they're going to try and fund from free cash. They don't want to go out to borrow this borrowing cost, especially right now, the high, high interest rates that are out there, right? So, and they can refinance that debt over time if rates go lower. But to borrow high is, you know, nobody wants to be doing that, and of course, that costs the taxpayers for the debt service every year in the town's budget. So, you know, they might say anything, $100,000 or more is going to go through borrowing. They might have that policy. That's common, something like that. And they would do a band of bond anticipation note, which is what they do all the time for short, short individual projects, and then every once in a while, they'll take a group of bands, and they will put it together and go out to bond, where people invest in municipal bonds as, you know, part of their portfolio, et cetera. So obviously, the town treasurers and the finance department will look at that. But in the immediate is the debt service that the town has to pay in the principal and interest, essentially like a mortgage, they have to budget for that, and they really try to smooth that out, not have those spikes. So if we put together a CIP and we do our part to say, "Here's all our priorities," and spread it over a five-year plan, which, you know, can have things, things come up, and sometimes you have to change it, but essentially, trying to come up with a smoothed-out number, I'll just, you know, say it's $250,000, whatever it is, and we say, "Here's what, here's what we would do with $250,000 a year, for instance, $100,000, $500,000, whatever it is." And they do that, you know, perhaps with the rest of the town budgets and departments, they might already be doing that, I don't know, I haven't had time to dig in. But that allows them to smooth out the debt service they're carrying at every given time, given time, and smooth out their own budget for the debt service payments, so much a year, without large spikes. So it's good for us, it's good for planning, it's good to really enumerate what, what we see needs to be done in the priority list to get those things done, and it holds us accountable if there was a funding mechanism to say, "This is the money that was meant for this, and let's get this done," and keep up with it. And it usually is also beneficial to the town to not get surprises, like in an article, "We need $400,000 for XYZ," you know. So I don't know their philosophy, I can't speak to that right now, but there is a lot of benefit in many ways to be having a five-year plan. I just wanted to.
Thank you for that. My second question, and I need to preface this with just deep gratitude for the intentional way that all of the leadership, school leadership, have gone to craft this budget and to balance really critical needs with fiscal responsibility. So I see that, and I just needed to express my admiration for that. For myself, and perhaps any of the viewers out there, regarding the mandated positions, can you just provide me with, like, a quick five-sentence overview of the ELL mandates? Is it like a percentage of the students? You know, I'm thinking, for example, if we had a large influx of another population, would that then have a fiscal implication? And what is that tipping point?
So the, and Ms. Fernandez, I could probably speak to some of the details as well, but I'll give you the five-second. The issue with the EL population and the FLEP population, those that are coming out, is that we are seeing a significant increase in the number of students that are L1, that literally Level 1, Level 2. The amount of time that we have to spend with those students in order to move them across the way, if you will. So, and by across the way, I mean to the next step where they're assessing out and so on and so forth, and becoming FLEP students. That's the key. It's the number of those students, and the intake, and the clarity of what we have to do with those students. And, I mean, I saw two administrators sitting in this office, literally filling envelopes because of the amount of work that they have to do to send out information to certain families. And then there's everything to do with interpreting, translations, all of that stuff. And Dawn, I don't know if you want to speak to some of the stats that I know you've been dealing with.
Sure. I can stand here, this is great, okay. Oh, thank you. So the, the additional positions would allow us to support especially our newcomer, our lowest proficiency-level students. The state guidance on that is 90 minutes per day per student at the L1 and L2. For the most part, students exit once they're a four or a five. And so the proficiency-level three, four, and five students are seen for 45 minutes a day, so covering that amount of service time across all of buildings, K to 12. And then we also saw a significant amount of improvement in the coaching. At the middle school, we did a pilot last year, and the group of teachers that the EL coach worked with, the previous year, those students had made 0% progress, or 0% growth. After one year of part-time pilot coaching, they went up to 47% growth.
Wow.
And that was the only thing that was different in all of the practice. And so, you know, the data that we were able to collect, I think, really suggests that that was instrumental in supporting language acquisition, both academic and social. Does that?
Yeah, no, that's very helpful context, thank you.
And I think, I think to speak to the comment real quickly, the goal of the Stoughton Public Schools is to accept our diverse languages and multicultural of our kids, but to make sure that our kids are, in fact, coming out of Stoughton Public Schools fluent readers and speakers and writers of English. That's a, that's a, that's a goal of Stoughton Public Schools, that's a goal of the department, that's the goal of every general ed teacher that works with these kids, is we want these students to be reading, writing, and arithmetic, and critical thinking at the highest level possible after spending either the day they came to us in first grade as an EL, or, believe it or not, 12th grade, they're walking through the door. And our goal is to get them there. So, and kudos to our staff that does a great job, but I just want to be very, very, very clear, when you're looking at an L1, L2 proficiency, you're talking about 270-plus hours of direct contact EL time with a highly-trained professional. That's a, that's quite the schedule of, and by the way, at the secondary level, still supporting, really, their transcript development so that they can attend or apply to college if they so, so choose.
Thank you.
Yeah. Dawn, can I ask you another question before you leave the table? Could you talk a little about the ILP requirement that we're now implementing?
Thank you for asking about that. So we had 110 students. The state recently, within the last three or four years, started identifying benchmark goals for students with the intent that they would be able to exit the EL program within about six years. That's the goal, at which point, students are considered to be near-native or comparable to their peers with English, and able to access the English classroom independently. So in order to meet those benchmarks and be on target to exit the program within the six-year timeframe, students get that benchmark every year, and it's based off of their access test, which they take every January. This year, we had 110 students not meet their benchmark, which means they are put on an ILP, it's an individual language plan. And there are goals quite similar to the effort that goes into developing an IEP for a student with a disability, but I do want to be clear that they are very different, and I think that's important to note, but, but that same idea. So goals are developed, there are benchmarks throughout the year to monitor progress, surveys with teachers, checking in with students, and then the actual plan itself, which includes parental or family input. and then the actual plan itself, which includes parental or family input, educator input, administrative input. And so, to have to write 110 of those in September was a significant amount of work from both the teachers and the administration.
And I think what you need to take away from that is we're seeing a migration for the EL department, where it's starting to look a lot more like the Special Education Department in terms of what you're required to do and the amount of time and resources that you invest in individual students. And whereas, you know, three, four years ago, we were at half the number of Ls, or excuse me, multi-language learners in the district. I mean, we've doubled that number. We've also put in an incredible increase in the amount of service we have to provide, the documentation that's involved, the plans that we have to develop to ensure that every student experiences success. So, it's not just doubling the number of students. It's doubling the number of students and a multitude of additional services and accountability that the district has to meet. So, it's a lot more complicated than it was three years ago when we had half the number of students that were Ls or Fls.
And to put it into perspective, at the time that Dr. Bailey had developed the recommended budget for the department, we had identified 560 students of Ls and Fls and that was in the middle of September. Now, in the middle of November, we have nearly 640. And that increase is not with the exited students. They're almost all newcomers. And so, just that in and of itself, in two months, we have 80 more students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amazing amount of work. Any questions?
Yeah, just a, so, more a comment, but I think, um, thank you all for being here and for putting all of this effort and energy into pulling the data, sharing the data, making this case for Dr. Baez. This memo is really, really helpful. I think our students are awesome. Their needs are evolving. We just need to make sure that we're positioned to be able to meet those needs. And I think that this really lays out a case for how we can do that. I think, as much as possible, like to be able to communicate that to folks who aren't in it as much as all of us in this room are and like mostly all of you in this room are. I think it's really helpful to just have those anecdotes and stories, like that data point about the coaching pilot. That's so powerful. Like, as many of those as we can get, I think, would be really helpful just to like help articulate like what the needs are, how much data and thought is going into like these asks that we're making of the community and just like being able to articulate some of that would be really, really helpful. So, that's sort of my comment, but I'll leave it there.
Thank you. I agree. Switching a little bit, I want to, since the elementary principals all came out here, I want to talk a little bit about the assistant principal position because I think people are going to be surprised that we don't have these positions already. And I want to ask you a little bit about what has traditionally been done in that kind of assistant principal role and kind of where you see this role playing out, just so that people have some more information because we will get pushed back on, why aren't you just adding more teachers? You know, why another administrator? And so, I don't know who wants to speak up to that. I know you put a lot of thought in it. I just want to give you guys a chance to articulate for us and for the public.
Sure, we can take turns if I don't answer this appropriately or clearly enough. It's nice to see all of you. I haven't been here for a while. So, right now, we have an assistant principal position that is a stipended position, and that is a Unit A teacher that receives a stipend to perform some extra duties either before or after school or a combination of both. Those duties are supervisory currently, so they will be responsible for perhaps watching the students in the morning prior to the Unit A contract time. And then they also stay after school with the students beyond what the contract time would allow. What we're finding now is that there are so many needs within our student body that in order for us to effectively be the instructional leaders that we really need to be and want to be, as Dr. Baez said, we're not able to necessarily do everything as optimally as we'd like to because there are so many operational duties in addition to those supervisory duties that the APs are doing currently. So, some of the different things that an assistant principal would do if we have someone full-time is they would be another administrator. They would be able to take on some of the different evaluated tasks that we currently have. They would certainly be able to handle student discipline and student support. They would be able to assist in help and data collection and reporting. They would be able to also be instructional leaders within a building so that they would be able to do walkthroughs and provide suggestions and support to staff. They would be able to support not only the intervention model but the coaching model that we're trying very hard to get up and running. And I think that overall, we're finding, just as the student body is evolving, our jobs are evolving with that. And it's just, there's a lot that we have to do and it's just nearly impossible to get everything done right now. And so, I think that the addition of an additional administrator within our building would be exceedingly helpful to make sure that the buildings are not only operating optimally, but that we'll be able to ensure that the instruction is as high as it needs to be so that our students continue to grow and perform at the levels that we know they can. Does that make sense?
Yes, no, thank you. If you have any questions or further comments about that.
No, I appreciate that question, though. Thank you.
I think it's a great question. I think it's really helpful to understand the difference between what the assistant principal position does now and what we would need it to do. And we have gotten some questions about, everybody talks about the special ed and the EL population, which we definitely need. I really appreciate all the work that we've done on that. And I've gotten some questions, so what about the rest of the kids? What about the other kids? But I think this is one of the ones that speaks to that, that this is something, a position that will, these positions will affect everybody in the building regardless of what they are. Having that extra person as a support benefits everyone, every student, whether, whatever their needs are.
This is a, so, I have some experience with adding these positions in a prior district. This is a shift in school climate and culture. And I'm happy to provide the name of the principal of the elementary school that I did it at. It was only a 4-5 school with 390 students. Happy to give you contact so you can speak directly about how that position there. And they went the dean of students role instead of the AP role, but in this, in our situation, it's pretty much the same thing, except that job requirements would allow for evaluation and everything else. The money's pretty much going to be the same because they were in the Unit B contract. But it is, you see the shift in the culture and the climate because of the support that goes to all students across the board and also the adults. Two of our schools, without any ask from me during the tours, clearly articulated the need for an assistant principal in their building.
Can I follow up with another question for the elementary school leadership? I'm wondering about the implications of having a dedicated AP who would oversee, for example, student support and discipline on equity and particularly equitable discipline within the schools. I think one of my, obviously, that is a focus for Stoughton as well as for the school district, but I also want to iterate the need for this to continue once we move to consolidated schools and to continue to support these roles, even if we have that universal pre-K in place as a long-term impact. How does equity play into this role and how does this role help support that? Short straw or?
Hey, I think I am a short straw.
Everybody else took a step back and you're just standing there.
That's fine, I'll do it. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So, I mean, I will speak from the perspective of I was the assistant principal in a former district. Like, I joke with my current assistant principal, who's a teacher all the time, that like I was an actual assistant principal. That was the job. I was a full-fledged administrator. I was in Unit B. And I think it's a really important role to have in buildings. I've said this since I came onboard. It allows you to accomplish a lot more things, right? And so, I think it does get to that point of equity very quickly, right? You have a second person who is able to respond to a variety of needs in a variety of ways. I mean, and these, so the license for administrators is assistant principal slash principal. So, everyone who goes into that role has the same level of preparation for the role. I think the nice thing about it is they can step in whenever necessary as the principal. Speaking from experience, it sometimes happens a lot. And knowing like my, you know, group of principals here, like there are a lot of times where we are fully immersed in a situation and there does need to be someone to step up. And in a lot of situations, like we're asking a teacher to do that, which is great and phenomenal. My assistant principal right now is amazing. But it also pulls her away from her other responsibilities or pulls my administrative assistant into those situations. And I'll be honest with you, that's not something they signed up for. And so, you know, having this position is truly a game changer for any of these buildings. And I'm speaking from the building that would have a split one. I think it's just, I think it's, it would increase equity tenfold for what you're talking about in terms of discipline, student support, teacher support, parental support. I mean, we make so many phone calls and emails a day to respond to so many issues that that pulls us out as well. And that's just because we all try to do the best that we can to respond to parents in an efficient manner, to respond to student issues in a manner, to get in classrooms and do observations. So, I think Principal Monahan said it really nicely that, you know, it really supports students even more so than we're currently doing. And I think we're already doing a pretty phenomenal job with that. So, I hope that answers that question.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add real quickly that one of the goals of the Commonwealth that sometimes we struggle with as educators is the new disciplinary laws, which clearly articulate that we come up with alternative means before we suspend students, which, you know, including Stoughton, we have to continue to do better. But at the elementary level, that's such a key component. We know that if you're looking at at-risk populations of students, that it just, in most cases, doesn't just all of a sudden show up in 9th grade or 10th grade. It's, there's a history, including truancy, attendance, which is a key component of the Commonwealth through the Commissioner's Office. And as you know, I'll be showing some data to you in the entry plan around that that we have from the last couple of years. So, from the truancy to literally the student support, right? The idea that the student has somebody that they can go to because of XYZ, beyond a counselor and so on and so forth. And then just the day-to-day management of being a second adult that's helping with that, supporting it, enhancing it, is key. And if we want to be instructional leaders, principals need support.
Just wanted to give the middle school. Do you have anything to add about this at the middle school level? How about the dean of students for this?
Yeah, sure. I think I'm going to piggyback off of what Dr. Baez shared a little bit, kind of a combination of the two. I think in the middle school, and the restructure really provides the students support by having that restructure of two deans of students, an assistant principal and then a principal. Really, the model there, which aligns with the high school model, with the two deans. The deans are really working on your day-to-day issues, providing that student support. So, I want to highlight it's not just discipline because we're providing support and we are responding to behaviors, but we are looking at issues like attendance. The deans would be working with families on that and in terms of truancy, but also in terms of chronic absences. I think one of the pieces on chronic absences, when the state's collecting that data, is if it's an excused absence, it's still counting towards a chronic absence. And I know Ms. Miller and I attended an attendance conference earlier this year. We were looking at the secondary attendance. And one of the pieces in kind of play that we learned at that conference was last year, across the state, attendance is an issue. And the measure and benchmark for chronic absences is really if students miss 10% of the days they are enrolled in a school year. And last year, across the state, they actually had to do an additional benchmark of 20% of days missed. So, they actually measured twice due to the number of that had increased. So, for us, what it looks like at OMS, if we do this, is the deans are really working and working with those families on attendance. And then we're responding to student behaviors. And I think at the middle school level in particular, we see a lot of type 1 and type 2 behaviors, a little more frequent because those are lower-level ones. We're really dealing developmentally with students who are moving from elementary school. Their bodies are changing every day and they're getting stronger than they realize and really teaching them how to kind of have independence, but then also learn how to like walk properly in a hallway and make transition from classroom to classroom. And so, we see kind of in those in-between areas and spaces, really where students are also needing more support. You know, in a classroom with teachers and dealing with their classroom management, they're addressing the issue, but if something pops up in the hallway or in the cafeteria, that's really where we're addressing that in the office and with administration. And so, the deans would be able to be working on the day-to-day issues and then that leaves the assistant principal and principal. We're able to really look at a school-wide lens approach and look through trends. And so, what that does on our team is we have people really dealing with the kind of day-to-day caseload issues, really working closely with the family. But then on our administrative team, we also have like, we can also see the forest and we can look at two, at our trends in our data and see, well, what's our goal? And maybe where do we need to really address it as a school student-wide issue because it's a trend across maybe an entire grade and we're not just seeing it in pockets? And so, and then the instructional leadership piece as well. You know, we would all be pushing into classrooms, doing those observations, doing those walkthroughs. And for me, selfishly, I would be able to have more time to work with my first-year, second-year teachers and really provide them that support and push into their classrooms. I know at OMS, they're looking for that support. They're open to that feedback and I really want to be able to have the time to give that to them. And so, this kind of remodel and restructure would present a lot of opportunities. So, we could be managing the day-to-day and addressing those student issues. But then at the same time, we'd be able to really see how can we push our school forward and make those improvements and growth.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions or comments? That was a lot of good information.
You know, I'm going to put her on the spot, but I know she won't mind, Ms. Miller, because Ms. Miller this year does have like a real full team. And we've had some sidebar discussions about her day-to-day ability to do the principal's role. So, I don't know if you want to come up and just, because you're working it right now, because she was able to hire and get the candidate that she wanted and put the team in place by the first day of school. So, we're seeing some, and we'll get some data, but in our discussions, I'm able to see a principal who's getting in and out of those classrooms on a regular basis.
Yeah, it definitely has been a huge, oh, good evening, by the way. It's been a game changer at the high school. Like, my colleagues are anticipating at their own schools the addition of an assistant principal and the new structure at the middle school. This is the first year where I feel the high school is more appropriately staffed administratively. We have filled both of our assistant principal positions and both of our dean positions. Last year, we had added the dean position, if you remember, but we were down in assistant principal. This year, we're fully staffed. And so, what I've been, what we've been able to do is really that tag-team, team approach to supporting students. We've been able to broaden our student support team amongst the administrative staff and the school counseling staff, tackle attendance. That's been a huge focused priority area for the high school and the middle school, as Katrina, my colleague, mentioned. And so, we really are able to offer alternative strategies, offer some preventative measures and conferences and conversations with students and parents. Prior to suspension, we have been able to really see a huge improvement in our student behavior and culture. So, the behavior within the hallways, because our administrative team is out there in the hallways during passing and during, you know, critical times, we're better staffed in the cafeteria during our lunch. As you know, our lunches, or maybe, no, I mentioned this before, our lunches are bulging at the seams. We have three lunches and they're pretty big. So, we are able to fully staff those spaces. Lunch is a common time where problems arise. It's sort of that social hour of free, unstructured time. It is usually the time when things will go wrong and awry. And so, having the staff in the cafeteria and being able to manage those spaces has been huge. This is the first year in a long time that I haven't had to sort of run to be on scene for a crisis. And so, because I have the team to support that, which frees me up to be able to do more of the educational leadership in the building, pushing some initiatives forward, talking about alternative schools and alternative programming and bringing in other supports and opportunities for our students that would address things like equity, like you mentioned earlier, our multi-language learners, working with Dawn frequently about our program of studies. So, it has really opened up a lot at the high school. Really grateful.
Thank you.
I apologize for putting you on the spot, but we've had these sidebar discussions and I think it's important because that should be the goal within all of our buildings. Listen, I say this as I can. I think it's really, really important to understand that this team has put together a plan that is child-centered, supports the educational goals of the district around all students in every category that we can think of that needs the support. And I think lastly is it's truly done from the deep discussions, the rooted discussions of education. I mean, there is a ton of things that we're leaving on the table because we know it can't all be done in year one. So, we're talking about alternative education and we're talking about, you know, early college and we're talking about CTEs, career tech education. We're talking about how do we target at-risk students at a younger grade and not wait until later? Where do they go? at a younger grade and not wait until later? Where do they go? Where do we physically put this? You know, all of those questions that I have to try to resolve on your behalf. So, again, this budget is subject to change, but I want to thank all of you guys for being here this evening and for your comments and for the working team. These three people have been working their tails off to get a budget to us and along with Ed Clark and the Special Education Department, who couldn't be here with us tonight. But, that's the goal. We'll see where this lands as we move this forward, subject to change.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here and for answering your questions. Really appreciate that. It's very helpful to have talking points when people ask us because they will ask, like, why these people, why these questions. So, very helpful. Thank you.
And if I may, I'm going to dismiss them because they get to be back to work early tomorrow.
Yes, yeah. So, next time, yeah, good evening. Everything's good. So, next time, I do want to point out that we will have a public hearing. That's December 12th at 7:00 PM. So, the public is invited to comment or come and listen to our discussions in person or continue to watch them on Smack. So, next time, we will be voting on a budget and we will be voting on the articles. So, keep looking at the budget, keep asking questions. More to come. Anything else before we move on? All right. Next is the elementary school building project update and responsibilities. I don't have a whole lot. Last time Armando asked, he's unfortunately not here, about the timeline and about the committee getting updates on the schematic design. And I wanted to answer that. At our February 13th meeting, the project team is planning to present the schematic design that will have cost estimates going forward to setting the budget for the project. They will ask us to take a vote on the schematic design at that time. It's not a requirement, but it is a formality that's very helpful as they go to, before the MSBA with the next approval. That's the end of March. It just shows our support for the project where it's at. So, that will be coming. So, that is the next kind of deadline is the end of March, end of February, they will submit the schematic design to the MSBA for approval to the next process. That will set the budget. And then we'll be able to go to town meeting and to, before the town vote. We are still working on videos hopefully soon, maybe after I've recovered my voice, I can help with those. I did want to, there's, we've had a couple of questions from the public about pickleball. We did mention that in discussion. So, it has been in our minds for possible inclusion in the grounds facilities for this project with Conservation Commission maybe coming aboard. So, pickleball fans, it's on our minds. The next building committee meeting is Wednesday, December 13th, if I'm correct, at 7:00 PM here in the conference room at the district offices with a focus on sustainability. I believe the Climate Action Plan Committee has been invited to attend with us. So, we're going to talk some more about the goals, some of the options that we're looking at. Dr. Baieda, do you have anything to add about this?
No, I think after the next, the upcoming meeting, we'll have a lot more to say in terms of the project.
Yes, exactly. Any questions about elementary school projects? All right. Moving on to the MAS-C conference report. Lindsay was our representative at that. She gave us some very helpful notes and she's already shared some insight on that. And I don't know if you wanted to add some more about your experience or what you learned.
Yeah, I just really appreciated the opportunity to attend the conference. It was the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents joint conference. And it was just really helpful. I got to go for three days and just be with other school committee members from other communities, superintendents, met a lot of folks. Went to some really helpful sessions and I took a lot of notes. So, the caveat on the notes is I took them by hand and then typed them up several days later. So, if they don't make sense or if something is like confusing, please ask me because I will gladly clarify it because it is just possible that this like, yeah, meeting got lost. So, want to like caveat that pretty heavily, but like wanted to share back some of the learnings. In particular, the general session on Thursday, November 9th about strategic communication was incredibly powerful. There was also a session on interest-based bargaining that I thought was really interesting, one about working with your PACs. So, CPAC and LPAC, which I thought was really cool. They also were able to name like a couple of specific communities that have really strong PAC practices. So, lots more to look into there. So, yeah, just, I think it was a great experience. Hopefully, brought back a lot. Dr. Baieda, I know you added some notes in here, too. So, I will speak like for my own notes in terms of messiness. I don't want to like put that on you, but...
I took the lead. They're mine are as messy as yours. I just wanted to say, it was really, I sat in a session, it was actually to the side of Lindsay, on the general session, strategic communication. And there are six key areas that were mentioned. And it felt really good to sit there. And I actually noted it. So, instructional coaching, we got it. Family student engagement staffing, we got some of that. We can do more. Translations and translators and translations, we got it. Counselors, we got it. Data specialist, we got it. Assistant or coordinator for DEIV, that's an area we're going to continue to work on, but we have some ideas, and you know from the budget presentation, on how that, to do that moving forward. So, when you look at those six major components, it was really good to check the box and say we're moving in that direction. I have also been reached out and had some discussions with the MIAA about the standards-based approach to assessing the quality of athletic programs. We may be a pilot district in the spring. This is, think of NEASK, you know, the accreditation process, but without anything except a report and you can do whatever you want with it. Basically, they come in, other superintendents, other coaches, other principals, and so on. They come in and they audit your athletic program and give you feedback. And then you decide what you're going to do with it. But it doesn't have that same accreditation thing that like a high school does. But it's the same concept. It's brand-new. Since they've come out with the idea of doing it, they've already had six other states reach out to them and say, this is a, this is a great idea. We need to do this. How do we do it? So, I put Stoughton Public Schools in six to 12 out there for being considered for that. If they want to run a pilot with us, we'd be happy to do so. And then, the other one that I always have to kind of look to is the crisis stuff. And I put my general notes on there as well. So, she was, Lindsay was definitely a student the entire time she was there, attending all the different workshops. And I appreciate it because the notes have helped me because of the things I didn't go to. So, thank you.
I see that the, you did make it to the delegate assembly and voted on resolutions here, which, to remind people, was the one about transportation bidding. And so, that will go for, that's not, at this point, it's a recommendation for the MAS-C to support efforts to go before the legislature for that. So, it's not changed anything yet, but hopefully will notify people that we're very much interested in that. So, it was great to see. That was our colleagues from Southeastern Tech. So, any questions for Lindsay or comments?
Just to comment, just so appreciative of your diligent note-taking, both of you. I felt like I was there. And came away with some really, you know, thought-provoking ideas and innovations and guiding questions to think about. So, I really appreciate that.
And if you have any thoughts on wanting to follow up, we have the names and the contacts for any of this stuff that is in the agenda book, if you will, that we can easily call that school system, give you that school committee member's contact, because usually it was a superintendent or somebody from the school that worked in the schools, plus there's school committee members involved in many of them. And we're happy to do that and get that information to you.
I think a couple of presenters mentioned that materials would be available. I haven't gotten anything yet, but if that does become available, I can share that out, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to echo, thank you for putting this together and presenting on our behalf and voting on our behalf on that resolution. There is an upcoming MAS-C online workshop, I believe. Chris, you're signed up for it. I've signed up for it, too, on supporting student social, emotional, and behavioral behavior.
Oh, yes. I'm like, what?
It's an online one. It's not a full conference. But, yes, as we see opportunities to come up, they do get in some great workshops, so.
I just saw the look of pure panic on my face.
No, I didn't sign you up for anything that you didn't already agree to. I promise. All right. Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of quick correspondence notes. We did have an email from the public about the electric vehicle chargers at the Stewart High School, asking when those were installed. They were part of the original project. And when they're going to be active. There is a little bit of work to be done deciding the regulations, you know, who can use them during the school day, how long people can park there. We would have to vote on a fee schedule. So, once that comes before us, I'll put that in the agenda and we would vote. And then it would go to the next process. The Climate Action Plan Committee has reached out. They would like to get some student involvement, get the schools involved in that. So, that will be a future meeting, most likely January, once we get over the budget hump. And then the Certain Recreation Department invited the committee and superintendent to walk in the Holiday Parade of Lights on Saturday, December 9th at 5:00 PM. Is anybody joining me?
I'm going to be there anyway.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're going to be there for the, yes. So, that, this is not as long as the Fourth of July parade, which is a lot longer. This goes from about the high school to the library. So, Mr. Krishan asked if, he told me in a previous year that holiday attire is highly recommended. So, if you have blinking lights, all the better. But I just wore Christmas stuff last year or whatever holiday you would like to celebrate. So, that's coming up. Does anybody have any other correspondence, any other matters to discuss? All right. I know we all want to get out and start celebrating Thanksgiving. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, December 12th at 7:00 PM here in the conference room at the district office. That will include the public hearing on the FY25 budget and articles. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Motion was made by Chris, second. Seconded by Fabian. Motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 All right. The motion's carried 4-0. This meeting is adjourned at, what is it? Eight.
Forty-four.
Forty-four PM. Thank you all for coming. Have a very happy Thanksgiving and good night.